Our Father, we are so thankful for this beautiful day that you blessed us with, and for this evening that we, as a community, can come together and discuss the activities of this school district. Father, we're mindful of our teachers. We ask you always to continue to bless them, and may they maintain a high level of enthusiasm and excitement as this school year begins winding down. And Father, for our students, we know that they have been undergoing testing. Ask that you will give them the encouragement and the excitement to know that not only is that testing behind them, but the opportunities that may come their way because of that testing. And Father, we ask always, everything that this board does, all action, decisions that we have that comes before us, that we will always keep in mind the best interest of the students and our community. May we always conduct ourselves in such a manner that the community realizes we truly do care about our students, and we desire the highest level of accomplishment of our students. And this is our prayer in your loving Son's name. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to our goal of high achievement for all students. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session, as stipulated in the Texas Government Code 551, commonly known as the Open Meetings Law. These items typically deal with personnel matters, consultation with our attorney, and real estate. For the record, we are all here tonight and can conduct business on behalf of the district. That being said, we will now proceed with Agenda Item 2, recognition of special guests and announcements. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. We begin tonight with our VIP program recognitions, and I want to just start with this with a quote from one of our favorite philosophers, Dr. Seuss. "Today you are you; that is truer than true. There is no one alive who is youer than you. Tonight we are here to celebrate you." Our VIPs are very important professionals. Twenty-seven years ago, we started selling you and the ones before you, our excellent CFB educators. This is our way of saying thank you for being you, teacher, educator, caregiver, friend, and so much more. You work relentlessly every day to help all our students achieve at the highest levels. You give selflessly, you care, you work diligently. That's you, and that's why we're here to celebrate you. So friends and family, stand when your "you" is introduced so that we can honor you as well. And now, Ms. Klein, would you please join me in the front to recognize our VIPs?
Ms. Klein, Dr. Burns, members of the board, members of our community. My name is Georgianne Warnock, and I have the absolute pleasure of serving as the principal of Aral Turner High School. It is my honor this evening to introduce our newest member of the very important profession Mr. Hammond has spent 29 years in the profession of teacher, coach, and principal. He came south from Oklahoma, or as he would say, "God's country," to join the Lion Team seven years ago. He and his wife Laurie are both dedicated to Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD and to our community. Mr. Hammond has taught world history, U.S. history, academic decathlon, and he serves as the dean of the ILEAD College at Aral Turner. Here are a few words that his colleagues had to share. Ms. Norton said, "Mr. Hammond is not only our dean and a teacher, but he is a coach, a mentor, a friend, and a counselor. He is always open to hear what students and faculty have to say. He helps find solutions, and he refuses to take for his hard work and dedication that are due him. I admire Mr. Hammond, and he makes me a better teacher every day. I am fortunate to get to work with him." Mr. Brown shared, "Mr. Hammond's coaching background is clearly evident, as he has a very positive way of encouraging us all and bringing out our best. He cares about students and is one of the beloved teachers that students will always remember. As part of our leadership team, he shows an ability to blend his ideas and input with innovative direction that our college strives to exhibit. We truly appreciate Billy as a teacher, a leader, and a friend." Mr. Hammond's students echo those same sentiments as his colleagues. "I love walking to Mr. Hammond's first period, because I know my day will be smooth and exciting when I start it in his class. Mr. Hammond wants all the best things for all of the people he knows, and he helps all of the people he can. Mr. Hammond is one of the best teachers I've had at Turner. I wouldn't have made it this far if it weren't for him. He encourages the entire class. He sticks with us until we get the concept. He is an awesome, respected teacher." Dedicated to his family, his colleagues, and his students, Mr. Hammond believes in all children. He works to make our school and community a better place each and every day. We are so lucky that he has chosen CFB as his professional home, and are blessed to have him as a member of our faculty and as a member of the very important profession of teaching.
Good evening, Dr. Burns, Ms. Klein, and members of the school board. My name is Sheri Schrech, and I'm the interim principal at Branchview High School. And tonight, I am pleased to introduce you to our newest member in the very important profession of teaching, Mr. Chad Hunter. Chad has taught English and CFB for five years, the last two years at Branchview and the previous three at Newman Smith. He has taught all levels of English, freshmen through seniors, including both on-level students as well as pre-IB and gifted and talented students. In addition to his teaching assignment, Chad is the offensive coordinator for our football team and the assistant varsity track coach. Chad exemplifies what it means to be a dedicated educator. Through his rigorous teaching and continual service to his students and fellow educators, Chad creates a positive environment wherever he is present. His positive energy is contagious and inspires his students at higher levels. Chad's classroom is very organized and is structured with a group configuration so that every student has a task during the class period and is accountable for his or her own learning. Jared Hollins, one of Chad's students, said, "When he's teaching, he always finds a way to connect it to something that we can relate to. He always brings the same energy to the classroom as he does to the football field." Chad's hard-working attitude drives his students and athletes to push themselves through adversities and any challenges that they face, both on and out of the classroom. Ash Derrick said, "I love Coach Hunter, because even when I'm having a bad day, I can see his smile and energy, and it always brings me up." A few of Chad's colleagues attest to his fervor. They say, "Chad has more positive energy than anyone I have ever met. He is constantly coming up with ideas to push and motivate our kids." He is also very professional. Chad fights the stereotypes of the typical teenager each day and is passionate about making those negative stereotypes, making sure that those negative stereotypes are erased at Branchview. Another teacher said, "Chad is an outstanding teacher and motivator. His enthusiasm in the classroom and on the football field is contagious and inspiring." Not only does Chad spend countless hours before and after school with his kids in the athletic program, but he devotes the same amount of time to his GT kids. Not only teach and coach, but he also contributes to Branchview's campus in other ways as well. He is a current member of the Campus Improvement Council, has welcomed student observers from universities to learn from his classroom, and helped chaperone big events such as homecoming and prom. He will also complete his master's degree in educational administration in May. Chad is a tremendous and dedicated teacher that just happens to coach a sport. He is a terrific motivator and excellent mentor for the young women and men in our school. We are fortunate to have Chad in CFB and extremely blessed to have him at Branchview. Please help me congratulate Mr. Chad Hunter as a member of the very important profession
Well, you know, great teachers lead to great student performance. So the next thing on our agenda tonight are national merit award recipients, and we will begin with the recognition of our students who have been honored for their achievements in that program, as well as other academic achievements which you will hear. And we will begin tonight from Aral Turner High School, Ms. Georgianne Warnock.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. The National Merit Competition is one of the most prestigious competitions in our nation in recognition of academics, and so we're so pleased to honor these students who have really been recognized nationally as the top pinnacle of student performance. We have, as you know, spring is a busy time in the life of a high school, so we have groups that have departed on trips this afternoon, so we have some students that aren't able to be with us, but we still want to recognize them. Parents, as I call your students' names, if you'll please stand so that we can recognize the contribution that you've made also in the academic development of your child. First, we want to recognize our National Merit finalist, Monica Kitson. Monica is the daughter of Roger and Michelle Kitson. She attended McLaughlin Elementary and DeWitt Perry Middle School. Monica hopes to attend the Ringling College of Art and Design and major in Illustration. Our students that achieved the National Merit Letter of Commendation, first we have George George is the son of Efren and Sarah Chacon. He attended Blanton Elementary and Polk Middle School. George majored in biomedical engineering at Northwestern University. Next, we have Daniel Cobb, who is unable to be with us this evening. I believe I haven't seen him. Okay. He is the son of Larry and Marie Cobb. He attended McLaughlin Elementary and Vivian Field Middle School. He will be attending the University of Texas in Austin, majoring in physics. Next, we have Karishma Ratnani. Karishma is the daughter of Kareem and Rashida Ratnani, who attended Kent Elementary and Blalack Middle School. She will be attending Brown University, majoring in international studies. Next, we have Victor Ron. Victor is the son of Victor and Marlene Ron. He attended McLaughlin Elementary, Vivian Field Middle School. He plans to major in neuroscience at the University of Texas at Dallas. Next, we'd like to recognize Laurel Tobin, who is the daughter of Sheldon and Denise Tobin. Laurel attended Janie Stark Elementary, Vivian Field Middle School, and plans to attend the University of North, majoring in communication design. The next group of students that we want to recognize are our National Hispanic Recognition Program Award recipients for 2012, 2013. The first is Brenda Sessena. Brenda is the daughter of Jesus and Martha Sessena, who attended Central Elementary and DeWitt Perry Middle School. She's applied to the University of Alabama and plans to major in computer science. George Chacon also received this recognition, as well as Victor Ron, who are up here. Kevin Garcia is the son of Fernando and Virginia Garcia. Kevin attended McLaughlin Elementary and Dan F. Long Middle School. He plans to major in computer science at the University of Texas at Austin. Joseph Peña is the son of Steve Peña and Linda McFadden. He attended Thompson Elementary and Dan F. Long Middle School. He's been accepted to Stanford and plans to major in computer science. That concludes our scholars for this evening. This is a brilliant collection of young minds, and it's such a pleasure to get to work with them and get to know them and their high school experience. We know they will have an incredible future. And tonight, our National Merit finalists, our first one is RuPaul Singavi. RuPaul is the daughter of Niti Singavi and Chandrish Shigavi. Before coming to Branchview, she attended Pond Springs Elementary and Barbara Bush Middle School. In the fall, she plans to attend Southern Methodist University to pursue a degree in Our next National Merit finalist is Apurv Sethi. Apurv is the son of Sumit Alkaseti. Prior to attending Branchview, he attended Los Colinas Elementary, Barbara Bush, and DeWitt Perry Middle Schools. After graduation, he plans to attend the University of Michigan and to pursue a degree in electrical engineering. Our third National Merit finalist is Marley Vandergrift. Marley is the daughter of Mark and Jacqueline Vandergrift. Before Branchview, she attended McCoy Elementary, DeWitt Perry, and Blalack Middle Schools. She plans to attend either Baylor University or Washington University in St. Louis and major in graphic design. And our fourth National Merit finalist is Rachel Wallace. Rachel is the daughter of Kevin and Amy Wallace. Before coming to Branchview High School, she attended Kent Elementary and McCoy Elementary and DeWitt Perry and Blalack Middle Schools. In the fall, she plans to attend American University to pursue a degree in edu... Our National Achievement finalist and a commended National Merit student is Maron Maron is the daughter of Mulualem and Sibla Welde Aragai. Prior to Branchview High School, she attended Barbara Bush Middle School. After graduation, she will attend Rice University to pursue a degree in biochemistry. Our National Merit commended student is Caroline Hodge. Caroline is the daughter of Donna Hodge. Before coming to Branchview, she attended Good Elementary, McCoy Elementary, and DeWitt Perry Middle School. In the fall, she will attend Austin College and major in either biology or history. Our next National Merit commended student is Arthur Tate. Arthur is the son of Martin and Joanna Tate. Before attending Branchview, he attended Tom Landry Elementary and Barbara Bush Middle School. After graduation, he plans on attending Northwestern University and pursue a degree in history. And our final National Merit commended student is Shabam Thacker. Shabam is the son of Vipul and Fagali Thacker. Before attending Branchview High School, he attended Los Colinas Elementary and Tom Landry Elementary and Barbara Bush School. He plans to attend the University of Texas at Austin and pursue a degree in computer And finally, this evening, our National Merit Achievement Program Outstanding Participant is James Legurre. James is the son of Terriann LaFond. Before coming to Branchview, he attended Tom Landry Elementary and Barbara Bush Middle School. After graduation, James plans to attend the University of North Texas to pursue a degree in biology. Please help me welcome and appreciate all of these students for all of their outstanding
We talk a lot in this district about our goal of high achievement, and so tonight I present the evidence to you out here. So, students, congratulations again. Let's give them a big hand. We do have some statements we'd like to share with you, so if you will, turn to the screen.
Good evening, and welcome to another edition of the Board Announcements, which films every month from inside the AMAT studios at Aral Turner High School. We have so many great things happening here in our district, and we can't wait to share. Are you looking for a teaching job or know someone who is? Well, why not work for the best school district in the state of Texas? CFB ISD will be hosting a job fair on Saturday, April 13th, at Aral Turner High School from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Representatives from all of our great campuses will be present to meet and talk with you about the teaching opportunities for the 2013-2014 school year. We hope to see you there. We want to thank everyone who came out to Casey's Run last month. What a huge success, even though the rain out. Proceeds from the event benefit all our All-Stars. ISD has attended specific schools in CFB. To find out if you qualify, visit cfbisd.eduopen. That's all we've got for tonight's announcements. Our next regular school board meeting is Thursday, May 2nd, at 7:00 p.m. in the boardroom of the Administration Building at 1445 North Perry Road in Carrollton. And there will be a work-study session on Thursday, April 18th, at 6:30 for all of our school board members. From the AMAT studios at Aral Turner, good night.
Let's give the AMAT studio and the young lady who did our announcement tonight a big hand.
That's it. Those who don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, we will reconvene. It is about 7:27. We'll reconvene at 7:37. For Agenda Item 3, report by superintendent, our report is going to be on the science achievement. And so I'll close this meeting at this time and see you back in 10 minutes if you're still here. Agenda Item 3A is presentation on student achievement, science. Dr. Burns?
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Members of the board, as you know, we always do a presentation regarding student achievement. Originally, we had this one scheduled. The state really hasn't confirmed any accountability items for us that we can really get our arms around at this time, so until we get some conclusive information, we'll postpone that for another time. And so we want to give a special thanks tonight to Ms. Susan Ship, our Director of Science, because at last-minute notice, she stepped in to pinch it and put this presentation together. You'll be very impressed, as well as we are, with the achievement of our students in science under Ms. Ship's direction, as well as all of our campus administrators and teachers out there. We're very proud of that. So I'll stop talking and turn it over to Ms. Ship. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Burns. Thank you for the invitation to speak. See how we related with our subpops in Biology EOC. We do have a small group of students, it's about 97 students, at the Metza program at Turner High School that do take physics as ninth graders. And so those students in 2012 took the Physics EOC exam, and you can see compared to the state, again, blue is CFB, that we performed quite a bit higher than the state data shows in overall and all of our subpopulations. For grade eight STAR testing, again, grade eight is in blue, and you can take a look at our overall and subpopulations and see how we fared in comparison to the state. And at grade five, in our STAR testing, you can see overall and our subpopulations that our fifth-grade students exceeded the state in all areas. So with tax testing and STAR data, you can see why I'm saying that we exceed the state with our science achievement. The measure of academic progress, the MAP test, I believe you saw a presentation last month on the STAR test, above the national norm, and our students either maintain or have grown in their science knowledge throughout the five years that we have been testing. So this first line here is testing at eighth grade. You can see the same pattern at seventh grade. We started in 2008 also. They maintained. We saw growth, so maintenance and growth. Again, well above the national norm. At sixth grade, similar pattern, growth, maintenance, growth, well above the national norm. Now, fifth grade, we didn't start fifth grade testing until 2010, and you can see this, again, maintenance and growth. Now, fourth grade, we just started testing this last fall, so you can see we're starting out with the same pattern, that we're well above the national norm, but we'll have to wait until next fall to see how our growth is there. Now, one thing I do want to point out, the reason why this data is so important to us in science, as you take a look right here, 2011, all of our schools had a year period or so of maintaining, and that 2011 to 2012, we show significant growth. So I think that gives you an idea of some of our instructional practices. I know they kind of flew at you fairly quickly, but the examples that we had were laboratory work, drawing conclusions from our data and information, vocabulary development. work, drawing conclusions from our data and information, vocabulary development, our content literacy strategies, anchor charts, science projects, in a classroom. At this time of year, our, oops, all right, technology having problems. At this time of year, our specialists help teachers by working with students that may need a little extra support as they are preparing for STAR testing. The students have to remember information, these fifth-grade students have to remember information for over three years, and so sometimes teachers ask our specialists to help and assist with students. They work with them in class, they work with them Friday evenings at Friday School and for his students. And at the elementary level, we have Ms. Mettler, who is part of a pilot on using tablets, and this was one of the first days they were beginning to use the tablets, and she's helping a student figure out what's going on with her tablet. So we have teachers involved in a lot of different programs that help our students and push our students forward, and of course, my specialists are the heart of what happens in our science program, from curriculum, from working with teachers, and from the classroom, and I thank them for their work. Our third lever, this is where we try to look forward to what is going to help our students be successful as we look to the world that they're going to be in as they graduate from our school district and go on to other pursuits. So we have teachers who are getting involved in what we would call a student-centered strategy that's called a flipped classroom. So I am going to go to a teacher's website. This is, I hope it is.[721.79][721.79](CROWD CHUCKLES). Let me try again. This is Mr. Baker's website. He is a physics teacher at Creteview High School, and he has flipped his classes, I think this is his second year, working with the flipped classroom. You're probably sitting there going, flipped classroom? What he has done, you can see for homework, he has videos, and there are several videos on his calendar, and he does his lectures where he introduces his topic, vocabulary, concepts that they-
Go ahead. Try it now. Stop it or pause it. Go ahead, try it.
I wanted you to see at the middle school level, we have to teach the students how to use the videos. And so Mr. Kincaid, in his video, reminded them of what they could do. So when the students watch these videos, if they are taking some notes and they run behind, you know, in class, if you ran behind, you were just behind. Whereas with the videos, they can pause it, they can rewind it, they can watch it over and over again. And so we're finding when we ask students how they like these videos, they love it. They no longer have to raise their hand and say, could you repeat that? They can watch their videos over again. So we're quite impressed with our teachers who have been pioneers with our flipped classroom. I wanted to share that with you. Now, our 21st century skills, here's another topic where a lot of folks are like, whoa, 21st century skills? Well, a lot of us think in the 21st century, all the technology that we have to use, and that is a part of 21st century skills, but it's also preparing our students for life after high school, the workplace, getting along with each other, how to work with each other. And so, this is my second but last video that I'd like to share with you about our So I think that feel for what goes on in our science classes, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, you saw sampling from each grade level. And real-world application, with real-world application, we always try to connect what we're doing from our science content to the real world. And, you know, we just happen to have kind of an extreme real-world application that I'm going to use as the example. We have a group of kids that have had a journey to Mount Everest through Skype. And our teacher, Mrs. Lintelman, she applied for a session, the kids were, now that, of leaders in learning. Thank you.[985.57][985.57](APPLAUSE).
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Ms. Watten?
I'd like to, just like to make a comment. I have a 10th-grade granddaughter and a 3rd-grade granddaughter, and they're more like sisters than cousins, and they are constantly fighting about who knows more about science, and we never can go in the car where they don't talk about the clouds, the trees, the flowers, and what's a bulb and what's a seed, and sometimes the 3rd grader Matthews-
I found out about the Mount Everest thing in the Dallas Morning News the other day, and it was a great article, and it was like, I mean, we're the only school in the history of the nation that's ever done this, never ever even attempted it.
Right.
And that was, that was a great source of pride right there.
Yes, very much so. It was impressive.
Mr. Goode?
Ms. Ship, if you could go to the first slide that was entitled Lever One: Science Curriculum.[1050.83][1050.83](MUSIC).
Not sure.
No. Ask him.
Yeah.
Down. Down.
Yeah, it's entitled Lever One: Science Curriculum.
Okay.
Would you explain that first bullet?
Okay, Understanding by Design format. The Understanding by Design format is a format that as a curriculum department, we all use for our curriculum. It uses backwards planning. That means that we look at our assessments, what we're assessing, how we're assessing first, and then we build our learning plan for our students. Now, when we talk about focusing, I thought that that might come up. Here's an example. When we are talking about genetics, we could spend a lot of time with vocabulary, phenotype, genotype, genes, DNA, and we could spend a whole two-week unit just covering vocabulary. That's a small part of the puzzle, a necessary part, but small. The big, the powerful knowledge, the big piece, is using the foundation material to get to inherited traits, our past, from one generation to another, but the appearance of those traits may be altered or not always evident. Idea that as educators, we think about, and then we think about the pieces we need to get our kids to reach that big idea. So from kindergarten all the way through high school, we look at what that powerful knowledge needs to be, our enduring understandings.
Well, I appreciate that. I think I have a partial understanding of the impact of that statement. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Shore?
Thank you, Madam President. Ms. Ship, I have a comment, and then a request of you, Dr. Burns.
Okay.
The comment I want to make is about a year ago, you and you-
Two years.
-recognized that the scores of the students were good if we were playing golf, but we're not playing golf here, so we wanted the scores to go in a different direction, but they didn't. And you're at that podium, and you said that we're undertaking efforts to rectify this.
Correct.
And which you showed us with the blue line that Lloyd is refusing to put out there because the state has changed the testing. You honored your commitment, and I applaud you for honoring your words that you shared with us the last time you were there. So I applaud you and everybody working in the Science Department for that.
Thank you.[1230.83][1230.83](APPLAUSE).
A request of you, Dr. Burns.
Sure.
I know your staff has plenty of time on their hands.
(LAUGHTER).
And we now know that SMU is in the American Athletic Conference.
It is.
We have, in the past, looked at certain districts to see how we're doing vis-à-vis those districts. The blue line and the red line that we showed, we had today, were us versus the state and the nation.
Correct.
If while they're twiddling their thumbs, wondering what to do next, we could see, I think that information would be valuable.
Absolutely, invaluable for us and the staff as well, so-
That's my question.
And you know, we're pretty competitive like that, so we find those people that are-
I thought you'd accept that.
Yeah, we find those people that are maybe doing some outstanding things, and we want to challenge ourselves to be there, so we will do that.
I don't think we want to use the state as who we're comparing ourselves to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was going to comment that I saw a television story on the flipped classroom with Mr. Baker's classroom that was really outstanding, and it's not just promoting our school district, but it really is impacting the students, I think, and is finding a way to use technology. And your presentation was outstanding.
Thank you.
And thank you to your team for helping you on whatever amount of time Dr. Burns gave you to put this together.
Not long, not long. She didn't have long.
Any other comments from the board? Ms. Chaffin?
If you would slide down five slides to the one that's on the bottom, am I looking at that slide correctly when I would interpret what's happening there is that our students are operating at this point one grade level above the state average? Or headed in that direction?
I would-
Speaking on to the next agenda item, I would like to remind the audience that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so during Agenda Item 4A, Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests is a mechanism our board uses to receive feedback and input from our constituents. If you want to address the board, you will need to fill out the form you found as you enter the boardroom and give it to Ms. Scrivner, so if anybody hasn't been able to do that. The board asks that comments pertaining to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. Remember that the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer to it until the appropriate time during the meeting. We'll now proceed with Agenda Item Number Four, Board Operations, and 4A, Audience for Guests. Item 4A, Audience for Guests, I have received two request forms for Audience for Guests. When I call your name, please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. As stated earlier, the board may not discuss or act on any issues that are not posted on our agenda for tonight's meeting. However, the board may refer to the comments to the administration for further review or research. The first Audience for Guests item is Randy Longman, Longman. Would you please come up? And then the second one is going to be Ann Blough, so if you would stage in white. So, Mr. Goode is our timekeeper, but usually we don't have a problem, so.
Well, thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Randy Longman. I live at 2717 Wagon Wheel in Country Place, and have been a member of, the tax-paying member of Carrollton for about 16 years now. My kids are currently over at Polk Middle School, and one is in 7th grade, one is in 6th grade. The reason I'm here tonight is to bring the board some awareness of what I think is a trend that's not positive. My older child has an IEP, requires a modified curriculum for him, and through his time at Country Place and his two years at Polk, so far two years coming up, he's been in this IEP, and it's been a wonderful program. My concern is that for the last couple of years, the classes for these students, and mainly, we're talking math and reading, the language arts, the two that are core classes for the children with IEPs, are currently running anywhere from 13 to 15 students in each class with, last year, I think we had a high of 17 in one of the classes. Every now and then, they get a teacher's help out in the back of the class. I have talked to five other districts that border your area, to your point, sir, about let's not compare ourselves to the state, but let's compare ourselves to some of the districts that are around. The optimum number of, or the maximum number of students in other schools' IEPs are eight students. My concern is that, and these are wonderful teachers, these are passionate teachers that Polk has over there that work with these kids. My concern is that a class size of 13 to 15 students, or 17, with the occasional teaching assistant coming in, and it's not, apparently it's not a resource thing, it's kind of as available, is served as well. Those teachers are not being served as well, because there is, when you have 15 IEP children, that's a lot of challenges. Some of the individual attention that an IEP requires, or a smaller group attention that these children tend to do better in, is limited. And even though you have the most passionate teachers there, those students may not be getting the full benefit of what an IEP is designed for. When I talk to the other districts and they tell me that eight is the maximum, what they'll do is they'll make sure that there's either a full-time TA, starting at the beginning of the year, or another class opens up that takes eight more IEP students. So instead of having-
For the athletic program, and we want to put our best foot forward. We're talking to some corporate sponsors, we're trying to get a little bit more recognition for the Creteview Football Program. As the mom of a child who's getting ready to be highly recruited, nobody knows who we are, so we're working on that from that standpoint, and I really think we need to show the several recruiters that I know for a fact are coming through starting April 25th, that we as a city and we as a community are committed to our programs. I also heard from the band director today, he has a lot of similar concerns, as I know our coaches do too. So I know you're working on it. My heart's desire is that it would be settled by April 25th, which is when spring football starts, and that we can take care of the chance of injury. Thank you.
I have one more, and it's Mr. Shackman, but yours is regarding an agenda item that we haven't gotten to yet. Do you have a preference on when you would like to speak?
You can wait.
I'm going to wait till the agenda item and then-
Slide 18.
...for clarification or discussion. Mr. Shore?
Finance zones, the tax increment reinvestment zone, we actually have three in the district, one in Irving, two in Farmer's Branch, and I'll not go into great detail about the structure, but I will just give a little background. These were, these were, these were development zones that were put in place back in the 90s, I believe, and the structure was such that the taxes paid on incremental developments in that area, instead of coming directly to the school district, went into a special development fund. The unique thing that was available to us in the 90s that doesn't still exist was the loss in taxes to the district would actually be made up by the state, so there was no financial loss to the district. So this district was made whole for the tax special development fund that could be used for infrastructure development, roads, sewers, streetlights, et cetera. We also included a unique provision in that that we identified and was available and appropriate, that school buildings and school facilities could be considered infrastructure development. So 65 or so percent, depending on the different fund, of those tax increment funds were set aside for school district developments. What we have on the agenda tonight is we collect the taxes, and structurally, after we collect the taxes related to those incremental developments, we pay all of those taxes back into the fund, into the tax increment reinvestment fund, which is managed by the cities and Farmer's Branch. The cities then turn around and return to us their appropriate share of those funds. What we're having to do that's a little bit unique is there's a contractual requirement that we remit those funds within a certain timeframe to the cities after, I believe, after May 1st, Anya? And that is before- And that is before your next board meeting night, but we don't have all the information to have the exact number for you tonight. So what we do here is give you a maximum amount that you're authorizing us to pay related to those tax funds, to pay is the $14,340,274. Next board meeting, we'll report back to you what we actually paid, but it will be less than that amount. We have enough information to know that that's the maximum. So you're authorizing us to go ahead and make those payments to the city to meet the timeframe under the contract. During the next month, we'll pay it. We'll tell you next board meeting what we paid, and then sometime in the next 60 days, the cities will return to us our share.
Thanks for the explanation. I'd like to make a... Go ahead.
Mr. Hyatt, isn't it true that the money in these TIPS can only be used for certain purposes?
Absolutely.
So that if X million dollars sitting in a TIP, and we wanted to consider compensating our staff, we can't consider using the money that's in the TIP to compensate the staff?
That's correct. It's both a statutory requirement and a contractual requirement. These zone funds can only be used for capital items, and specifically in the original contract, we actually had to spell out the specific items that we were going to use the funds for. And the only way we could use them for anything different than those items were if the school board and the city councils agreed to both of those changes in uses. Currently, we've already, we have actually built an elementary school with these funds. La Valita Elementary School was turned out of these funds, which made it essentially free to the operations of the district, which is, again, I look, credit the past wisdom of the board to enter into this. It was very financially positive things to do.
Thanks again for your explanation. I'd like to make a motion that we approve, 3B.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Watten. We have a motion by Mr. Fleming, and a second by Ms. Watten. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. With a vote of seven in favor and none opposed, the motion carries. That brings us to numbers B. And they were incredibly well run. We have item, a motion by Mr. Goud for Item B16 and B17, and a second by Mr. Shore for those items. So do I need to vote separately on those, or can I combine them? Ms. Grivner nodded. So all those in favor, please raise your hand. Oh, I can't vote. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Okay, that's right. So it looks like we have five in favor and two abstaining due to absenteeism. Thank you, board members. We are now at Item C, Recommendation for High School Principal, Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Con... Now, we have had a principal opening all year, and we ask one of our longtime administrators to take over as the interim there. And being an interim is not an easy job sometimes, because it has the name interim in front of it. But we are here tonight to bring your recommendation to fill that high school principal job, and our recommendation is Ms. Sherri Scrutch. Sherri, would you please stand so we can recognize you? So the administration would ask the board to approve our recommendation. Ms. Scrutch of Creekview High School. I know that surprises you, but that will be her assignment for next year.
Thank you. Looking to see, oh, Mr. Matthews.
It is with a great deal of pleasure that I move that we accept the administration's recommendation of Sherri Scrutch as the new principal at Ranchview High School.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews.
Second.
Ms. Watten made a second. All those in favor. All those opposed. That is unanimous. That passes. Congratulations.
Educational Services, in this room, out there, or in this district, that those are pretty big shoes, and we are forever indebted to Dr. Mayor's work in moving our instruction forward. But we are confident that we have developed the people within side this district to continue that journey adequately and efficiently and very effectively as we continue to improve in student achievement. So tonight, I bring you the administration's recommendation for Associate Superintendent for Educational Services, Ms. George Anne Warnock. Ms. Warnock is here also.
Recommendation of George Anne Warnock as our Associate Superintendent.
We have a motion by Mr. Matthews.
I'm not saying I'm second this. Is that saying that Ms. Warnock was influenced by Mr. Matthews?
Okay.
Sir, that's such a good thing to...
I'll second that. Which was... What are you second? Okay, so Ms. Chaffin, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed. That is seven in favor, and it carries. Congratulations, Ms. Warnock. Shackman, please come to the mic. We have three minutes.
Members of the board, Dr. Burns and Ms. Warnock, let me add my congratulations. You have been the principal when my son Harrison graduated in 2011, and you're Hunter's principal now, and I think you are an amazing administrator and appreciate all that you do. With that said, I was planning to ask a question of the board that is now a moot point. I had 127 teachers and staff my home in the last two weeks in a series of meet and greets, and have been discussing with a number of community members and citizens, and the general consensus of the constituents of this school district, parents, teachers, taxpayers, is that we have too much administration and not enough teachers. We've already heard someone up here tonight saying our class sizes are negatively impacted. We have middle school and high school classes of 34, 35, 36. We have elementary classes with more than that, with 24, 25. It's time for the board to not say, "High achievement for all students." We need to be spending our money in our classrooms, and we need to make sure that we are not putting more high dollars into administration for this district, but focusing on kids. I know you say you love kids. I believe you love kids. It is time to make that the priority of this district. It is essential, and people are getting concerned and frustrated, and I share that concern and frustration as a parent, as a taxpayer, and as constituent of this district. Why in the world do we continue to grow? We have the same number of students we had 10 years ago. We had, and we have 25 to 30% higher middle management administration. We just hired a wonderful person who will be a dynamic person in this district, but that's three-plus teacher salaries, and we just watched a man walk out of here tonight who has over twice the number of students that ought to be in his kid's class. I challenge this board to put your actions where your mouths are. Please help us bring things into reality, and let's find a way to put classrooms first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Voting public, voting that election authorized the school district to issue $300 million worth of bonds. That was after a long period of study and evaluation by some citizen advisory groups and study the district. And that 2003 bond election initially was planned to be a five-to-seven-year plan. Those of you who can add and subtract, that's 10 years ago. So we've actually extended the dollars in that plan three years longer than the original vote. So that's, we've taken it prudently, we haven't overspent more rapidly than we should, and we've also taken into consideration that our growth has slowed down a little bit from what our original projections were. And just because you authorized us to do the, we've waited until it was needed. In 2003, the public voted on what are known as general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds are identified for the purpose of constructing and equipping school buildings, and intentionally, the vote and the intention of the board at the time was to identify those as, as general construction bonds. And even though we had an identified list of probable projects and anticipated needs, some of them were immediately anticipated, but the bond committees that worked at the time and the board at the time understood that over that originally conceived five-to-seven year plan, and it was turned into a 10-year plan, they understood that those needs might change and might ebb and might flow. So by voting the bonds rather than specific obligation bonds, that gave the board the authority to adjust and change the original plans as necessary. In 2004, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 12, the board authorized the district to issue bonds in these amounts. And those were for projects that were needed at the time. At 2008 was when the economy slowed to some degree, and that was why we actually, we put off till 2012 the next bond sale. I won't dwell on this, but I think just the volume is worth illustrating. I'm fixing a list for you, the product bond. Turner High Schools Smith and Creekview High Schools had major expansion. Vivian Fields had a significant expansion. Perry had a significant expansion. Dan Long had a significant expansion. I won't iterate all of these, but every project I'm putting on the board was over a million-dollar project. These were all identified from the original bond program, all identified as need by the board at the time we sold the bonds. If anybody wants to go back and look at those, I just want to illustrate the number of projects and the scope of the project. Current projects that are in progress at the current time, we have Los Colinas Replacement. There is a, in my opinion, a strong element of ethics in maintaining some consistency with what the original intent was. And only after having made a specific and thoughtful deliberation of changing from that plan do you make the change. We don't just change because we had a different idea. We look back at what the original intent was, what the original need was, and if the change, if there's a change in demographics, in student population, in growth of the district, then we make some changes to address them. But we don't just arbitrarily change them. The only projects that were on that original list, and I went back and kind of dug out the 2003 planning items, the little bit of growth at the earlier levels, some of the primary grade levels are larger. In the foreseeable future, though, that school is not going to need any expansion. And Barbara Bush Middle School, the school was originally built for 900 students, 900 plus, actually. There's only 702 students there now. I'll talk a little bit about this when I get to Ranchview, too. We are seeing some growth at the lower grades in the western part of the district. The elementary grade levels in the western part of our district have begun to see some growth in the last couple of years. If you project those elementary grades out for the next six or eight years, we're probably going to still need the Barbara Bush expansion, but at this point, it's just a point at the elementary schools, the schools west of I-35. So take the average of each grade, west of I-35, multiply it by four, assuming that four average grades actually rolled up to Creekview, I mean to Ranchview in six or eight years, Ranchview would be, have 1,500 kids in it. So my point being, if those kids all stay in our school district, and if they all progress through the system equally, Ranchview in about six or eight years will have 1,500 kids in it. We know there is some attrition, there is just a normal high school attrition. I think Ms. Tillman ran some numbers, if you winked and winked. It's not unusual for that number to be like 98%. I think was the number it came into. So even if it's only 98%, there's still going to be like over 1,400 kids in that school. That would be overcrowded in six to eight years. Freeman Elementary School, on the other hand, has 631 kids in it. Freeman Elementary School is basically full, and it wasn't on the list of projects to expand. So just pointing out that while we've had some schools on the east side that probably don't need to be continued to, under consideration for expansion, we've got at least one on the west side that is over capacity. As I was talking about the elementary grades, we expect Ranchview to reach its capacity sometime in the 2016. Here's is actually a more practical number. We'd probably have to pay some expediting costs and stress all of ourselves to get it done in two years. So three years is realistic. If we want to, if we want to go a little slower, even four years might be a fair number. If we initiate the project in the summer of 2003, the building still wouldn't be available 2016. So we actually, we need to lead time this project a little bit. Not only is there a classroom space anticipated in the next four to six years, there are some deficiencies in the athletics and fine arts spaces, particularly fine arts. I don't think anybody's unaware that we didn't build the original building with a theater, an auditorium complex, so that's a significant. And we also intentionally built it with only one major practice hall with the intention of building the permanent band hall in the second phase. Well, the project program and the numbers have even got now, even at the small size it is now, that fine arts practice facilities may be, would you agree that that may be the most single significant deficiency of the building right now? They're really pressed with those practice facilities. And as much as we would like to have the performing facilities, that's not as practically as much of a pressing issue. So proposal to consider, all of that being considered, what we'd like to, we'd like to sell the remaining $45,865,000 in authorized bonds this summer. We'd like to initiate the expansion of Ranchview for 2017 school year occupancy. We're showing $35 million as a maximum amount. I truly like to tell you that my real goal is somewhere closer to 30, but I don't want to start the project underfunding it. We'd like to redirect funds for the extension of Freeman Elementary School. We believe it's our most significantly pressed elementary school right now, and redirect money that was in Sheffield and actually the McCamey Expansion Project. We'd like to redirect that to Freeman Elementary School. We'd like to evaluate the expansion of Barbara Bush Middle School. We still believe that within a reasonable timeframe, we'll need to kick that off. We'd like to go ahead and sell the bonds in this package, and then sometime in the next two to three years, initiate the project. Candidly, that would be one, if you'd like to reserve that $5 million for a future sale, that wouldn't cause us too much anxiety. We're just getting to the point where that's just a very small sale, and we gain some efficiencies by doing it all at once. And that leaves about $1,008,000. In the original bond package, we had some dedicated money for technology and other emergency issues. We'd suggest we leave that $1.865 million in there. ology with me, you have two responsibilities on your board. One of them, we talk about every time we open the doors, and that's a responsibility to have, to reach high achievement for all students. The other responsibility you have is to the taxpayers of your community. You're voted to represent them and how we spend their money. This, the two lines on this graph illustrate the original projected tax rates for debt service to pay back our debt that we published and discussed when we originally voted for these bonds. When we went to the public and had the election for the bonds, we told them, "This is what we think your tax rate's going to do from now until 2032." And we also knew that we probably, we may have another bond election before 2032. You can authorize the administration to set up a limit, if you will, a limit sale of how we would sell bonds for. You'd identify the maximum interest rate you're willing to pay, you would identify the maximum amount of bonds you're willing to sell. All of the, all of the components of what the bond sale would entail, you would set a maximum amount to. And then after the board meeting, over the next month, the staff and administration would actually go out and execute the bond sale with Dr. Burns executing the offer. The reason we like you to do it that way is we're going to do this on a competitive nature, so what we'll do is go out to the market and literally, and it can authorize the sale on a relatively short term. Can't really, can't really wait to the next board meeting. But you can set the limits of what you're authorizing him to do. The other thing we're going to do at the same time is execute a refunding of some existing debt. That's why we have in here a minimum savings threshold for the refunding, just like, essentially just like refinancing your own home mortgage, interest rates are great. And we can take some of our existing outstanding debt, bonds that we've sold in the past, and refinance them, flip them into a lower interest rate, and save, I keep turning to Ms. Tillman, she's our financial expert, but was it a million dollars?
Three million.
$3 million in interest costs by refunding. That's, that's a worthwhile thing to do. So whether we, whether the board has some concerns about the scope of the bond sale for the new money, for the new bonds, or whether you want to do it at all, I still would recommend that we consider bringing back to you the idea of refunding the existing bonds, because that's simply a financial transaction that saves the district and the taxpayers' money. As I mentioned earlier, the primary benefits of the parameter bond is the bond issue is in a day-to-day mode, day-to-day mode, meaning the bonds can be priced at any time. So once you authorize it, our bond advisors will truly watch the market and try to peg that at the absolute most optimum time for the sale. Timelines, next board meeting, we'll consider the parameter order. We'll receive a credit rating from the Moody's and Standard and Poor's, maybe Fitch, too, depending on if we want to pay for it. The Permanent School Fund, Permanent School Fund is an element of the state that literally guarantees school district debt issuances. If the state guarantees our debt issuance... If the state guarantees our debt issuance, we automatically get AAA rating, the best possible bond rating on the market, which allows us to get the best possible tax rate. If the permanent school fund didn't approve our bonds, and they will, but if they didn't, we'd still get AA minus rating, which is frankly very high for a school district governmental entity bond rating. So, yes, sir?
So, and then you showed your green bar and the blue bar.
Yes, sir.
I want to try and put this in terms that my brain can get a grasp of. If the board voted to name you the authority to authorize the parameter bond order, and I realize there's a number of variables involved, okay? But in this hypothetical situation, we have authorized you to do this.
Yes, sir. Sure. Essentially, there's no cost to the district for me to exercise that approval.
No, but if we sell the bonds, we've got to repay them.
But I'm getting to the point, oh, I follow. If you, if we sell the bonds, what does it cost? Right now, our tax rate...
Barry, at the numbers that you're plugging in, you're the most conservative guy on the planet anyway.
You can see, if you will, you can see on the graph, this is the current year. If we sell the bonds, you might note that next year, the dot is virtually the same place. So even by selling these bonds, our tax rate for debt's only going to go up a very minute amount.
What's your definition?
I did not bring that schedule. Tanya's got it.
Well, it says currently .9, I mean .29.
Yeah, it goes from .29 to... It goes from .2906 to .2921.
So, we're the math teachers who can tell me, on $100,000 of value, how much more do you pay?
$100,000, probably 20 bucks.
For $100,000.
Paying as long as possible the sales. We've been very fortunate with rates. They've been significantly low. We've had the misfortune in the current economy that local taxable values haven't grown and in fact shrunk some.
And I think board members, what Dr. Burns and Mr. Hyatt are looking for is maybe some direction on our comfort level with how we would feel if, you know, an item, do we want to see an item on the May agenda?
Well, I know when I first got on the board, we were discussing expanding Ranch U and board agenda.
Thank you.
Your part?
Refunding amount. Any bonds that have a maturity date or a call date that's coming up, that meet the criteria, that have a savings interest rate to them, we have done that. In fact, the market kind of does that for us, because we've got multiple underwriting groups that, all this information is public, all our outstanding debt's public. We have multiple underwriting groups that come to us on a monthly basis proposing that they are underwriters to do the same thing. So we've got a two-tiered mechanism to really dig deep into our outstanding debt to see if this is the absolute best possible time to do it. Again, I know you understand this, and you're probably just asking for the public's information. Some of our bonds just have a call date that just doesn't allow for the, even though their rates are higher, it just still doesn't pay. So we look at the call date, the maturities, and the rates to determine whether or not it's a good deal and a savings.
Thank you.
So to clarify my nod, if Mr. Shore was making a motion...
No, no, we're not doing motions. We're not taking action. All we're doing is kind of talking and discussing what we feel. Do you have a feeling?
I don't have feelings.
I have a very positive...
I know that.
Lawyers don't have feelings.
Very positive.
Thank you.
My nod, yes.
Okay. Mr. Hyatt, do you feel like you've been communicated?
I feel like I have enough direction that I can work for the next month on this.
And sigh, and make sure the issues may be. And I have given you just a...
I asked you to do two things.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell anybody that might not know what TASB is? And can you explain why we go to training?
Well, hopefully, they understand we need to be educated like our students.
Well, it's also mandated by the state.
That is.
It's not...
Texas Association of School Boards is a organization that provides guidance, training, support. It serves many facets, not only for the school board and for our educational process, but they provide all of the resources for training various people within a school district. For example, I'm looking at Ms. Scrivner. They provide training specifically for administrative assistants to superintendents and principals that's specifically geared for public education. They also provide a lot of resources, well, consider this, when you look at insurance, liability insurance, workers' comp, they provide a plethora of programs for insurance that nearly every school district in the state of Texas subscribes to.
They've helped us with our team of eight training that is required by the state. And a new board member to get quite a few hours their first year, and TASB is how you get those hours. So that is why we're having this conversation, because some of us as older board members feel there might be a little repetitiveness in our training. Is that where we're getting at?
That's correct. And that is true not only for us, but throughout the state of Texas. And we're trying to have the discussions that could lead to hopefully a change in the style, methodology, whatever it may be, in the required educational courses that are provided. What I've tried to do is capture, think, but two pieces of paper with just six bullet, or seven bullet points on it, and I thought we could just go through and describe them. My goal is to have Ms. Scrivner capture your comments. Also, any comments, please put them also on this piece of paper, and Ms. Scrivner will take all of these comments and notes that we've made, and she will also compile them into a final report that can be presented to TASB. That meeting, I do have an agenda, because it is Saturday, when that meeting occurs. So this is something where we're right at the end of, how should it be done differently?
Do you want this back tonight?
Yes, yes, sir. I need it back. Well, Ms. Scrivner needs it tonight, because she has to compile it tomorrow.
So it might be that there's not enough course description, or...
Inaccurate description.
Well, that's what we want. Okay. Mr. Shore, you sort of started, inaccurate description.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you read the thing, and it looks pretty good, you get there, and they talk about something else.
Okay. That's a legitimate point.
One other thing that would be really helpful, sometimes the programs are offered more than once, which is good if you say also what happens, some of them, those statements do not actually apply to what is presented.
You think?
Yeah. Be nice, Mr. Shore. We are trying to rectify it.
Well, I think what would be helpful is that it note, is this presenter talking more about a very small district?
Yeah. Okay.
Or is it more large?
Small, medium, or large.
Yeah, and they sometimes try to put that in there, but not consistently, or maybe...
That part, that element is very, very important, because there are so...
Kind of a, or having a paper copy to have in hand to reference. But if there were an online that maybe elaborated more on the bios of the speakers, or delved deeper into maybe the topic, I don't know. But I don't know, do other people like the paper copy?
You don't get the paper copy till the day of, you know, when we register. But we have to register for the classes on, you know, online. So we don't really have the full description, and many times they're changed. I'll go to sessions that were, didn't, apparently, that's happened to me quite a few times.
Okay.
So I find out I'm going, when I register and pick up my pack, and I'm going to another, a session that I really didn't want to go to, so I choose another session.
For the audience that's listening to us discuss this, the number of people that they will allow into a particular session is determined by the size of the room. And so when we register, we register for our first choice, second choice, third choice, and they shuffle it as best they can.
What about, as we're all aware of, you go to a session, and it's flowing.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes people actually stand outside the doors of the room to listen to the presenter.
For the really good ones, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, and I sometimes am in there wishing I had handouts, and sometimes there are handouts.
That you wish you didn't have.
Well, I've never wished I didn't have them, because I always want to take notes, and it's always easier to take the notes if you've got a handout set of the slides. So you're not trying to write down everything that's on the slide deck, as well as comments that are being made.
Because is there some way to reference the material later? I don't know of any.
No.
Handout is all that we, other than our photographic memory if we're Mr. Shore.
Okay.
Having, having follow-up electronic handouts would be...
Or something we could look up on our smartphones.
Yeah, well, yeah, you hopefully would be able to...
For a meeting, or...
Maybe. Yeah, that's a thought.
Okay. Okay. I'll tell you what, in the interest of time also, why don't we go ahead and go to the second item?
We'll email our comments to you.
To think about the mechanics, that is, the date, time, location, cost, starting, I'll use SLI dates. Unfortunately, this year, SLI San Antonio is the weekend of graduation, which is true of most school districts in the state of Texas. So the difficulty will be, a lot of people will not go to San Antonio this year, because they're having graduation that weekend. So if you, is there a better time to do SLI?
Plus, we have a board meeting on the June 6th, first night of the San Antonio SLI.
A nation, and what the overall sociological impacts of that are going to be, and what the impacts are going to be on education, and how well kids are prepared for education when they come to us. I think those things would be really good. I think that topics, trying to get it where the majority of people can understand it, which is no easy, no mean, no easy task, but the financial impacts of what we're looking at statewide, nationwide, in terms of changes in healthcare, what does that mean to a school district? And how do we prepare for that, or how do we respond to that?
Okay, good.
And what does that mean relative to the health of our kids that are coming in or not?
I think current issues really look at what could be something a board member could go to Fort Worth and learn that is really current, not something that maybe was taught the year before also.
Okay, both at the...
Like health insurance.
Yeah, state, local.
Or like flipping classrooms, or like, whatever, you know, we have the legislative update after every legislative session, which is a little...
At the legislative session. And then there is required training that all board members must get after the legislative session is over, and they've had a chance to print books. But the more we could understand about that, and Ms. Klein's right, it is dry, but...
Well, I think someone from TEA explaining what is the impact, you know, like last year, they decided that the STAR tests wouldn't be factored into a kid's grade. Well, what are they going to do this year? We've just chopped all the STAR tests, so what's, you know? If there's some insight that can make us more intelligent.
At convention, at the annual convention... Sessions that I've gone to at SLI was that they were forum sessions, and one for big schools and one for small schools. And we, when I went to this session, there were about 10 of us from large districts, and we had a topic, and I don't remember what it was, but we just picked each other's brains, and it was very, very valuable. We were hoping, we were wishing it were longer, because we were still talking when it was time to go. And it, it's so valuable, sharing.
Prepare and read.
Ended up being total bird walking, you know, I mean, we didn't get, talk about the book at all, because it, it may be a book about a topic, and then everybody had other ideas about the topic. So we didn't talk about the book whatsoever. It ended up being, I went to two of them in the last six years, and I didn't really find them valuable.
The one that I attended a couple of years ago, I thought was worthwhile. So maybe it just depends.
I think it depends.
Number five is presenters. And what I would say is, take scoring, and if somebody's really, really bad, don't invite them back every time.
Regarding topics, this is something we may be deficient at, because if you take the winter governance and the spring workshop, they do provide different topics and different presenters, but we don't always have anybody from our district there to really understand and appreciate, because we may decide one of these other workshops may be better than going to SLI or convention.
Right.
And that, somebody from the board attends, something like that, to better understand.
Okay, you just gave me an idea. They try and bribe you by having full attendance, you know, and the districts that have all their board members at SLI, you guys get a gold star, and if everybody attends...
You get your name on the wall.
The, whatever the other one is, you get a gold star.
Yeah.
So what they should do is, if everybody from your district has attended one of their major deals, then you get a gold star. Because some of us may want to go to winter governance, some go to SLI, and some go to the convention. One of us, not all of us attend each of the three, but if we have a representative at one of the, at each of the three, we should get our gold star.
Okay. I'll put that under other.
Thank you.
Exactly where I thought it should go.
Okay.
Are we already there?
No. Let's go. We're on, you started addressing, Ms. Klein, indirectly, in item four, which is the format, because this has been discussed before, and I think we probably need to talk about it. The, how the data, how the information is presented.
Future. Well, they had, what's her first name? Her last name was Dr., her name was Beagle, Dr. Beagle. Couple of years ago, at one of the sessions, and she was extremely inspirational from the fact that she was born into generational poverty.
Oh, right, yeah.
And she...
Last summer.
Was that last summer?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you know about it, then it must have been last summer.
Absolutely.
But she was, they've had some really phenomenal speakers.
Okay. You haven't said it, but I felt like somebody wants to say it. The quality of the presenters on a lecture topic, because a lot of the presenters are school board trustees, superintendents, or other administrators at some school district somewhere in the state of Texas.
I think LeVar Burton was a great speaker.
I said earlier, score these presenters and don't invite the really bad ones back. Even if they constantly submit topics, and the topic sounds good on paper, be wary.
Some of the strongest presenters I've had are the TASB presidents.
Well, I wrote under the format where there's some interaction. But a lot of the training we go to, we just sit there wishing for handouts, except for Frank, and we...
Other thoughts, something that you think of? Please write it down, give it to Ms. Scrivner if you can tonight, and we will make our case on Saturday.
No joking, I'm glad you brought this agenda item up, because it's important.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. That brings us to item 4G, consideration and possible...
I've enjoyed my time as the delegate, I really have.
That's legislative action.
Oh, that's not what we're talking about, never mind.
Ms. Chaffin, may I move on, please?
Please, I'm through.
I would not want to scoot too fast. Item 4G, consideration and possible action regarding termination of probation... Item 4G, consideration and possible action regarding termination of probationary contract teachers at the end of the current contract period. Erica Sweeney and Grace Thompson, action. We will now consider this item, and would any board members like to convene in closed session to discuss the personnel matters related to this item, or speak with the district's attorney?
Not me.
I don't see anybody, so a member has indicated that they would like to convene in closed session, therefore, we will proceed with agenda item 4G. Do I have a motion regarding agenda, board item, board agenda item 4G?
Ms. Klein.
Yes, Ms. Chaffin.
I move that in the board's judgment, in the best interest of the district, will be served by terminating the probationary contract employment of Erica Sweeney at the end of her current contract period, and I further move that the board president be authorized on behalf of the board to provide the employee with timely written notice of the board's action.
Thank you, Ms. Chaffin. Do I have a second?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Goode.
There was just one person you mentioned.
I think you're going to do them in two separate items.
It's an important thing to talk about, and I'm very happy you brought that up.
Good.
I think we all want to make sure we have worthwhile use of our time. Item six, are we there? Close me is authorized under Texas government code. We did not go to this item A or B, so I'm going to go to item seven, which is reconvene, which we don't need to do. And so that brings us to item number eight, adjournment by my determination. We have reached the end of our agenda, and we are adjourned at 9:44 PM. Thank you all.